All right. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Alderman, question?
Here.
Alderman, question? They're calling him out here, and Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Where was the agenda?
Make a motion, put the revolver in, and put in the justice call session.
I second it.
Move the maiden, take it on, please.
Aye.
Both?
Aye. You wanna why?
You wanna say you're up.
Um, there's under five down there, watering supervisor Alderman Smith, is incorrect.
Yeah, it's still correct right now. I plan on making adjustments, but I have not made it. And through I do, it's still official that you are.
Still a change.
And when I get it on the agenda and get it corrected, right now you're still there. I didn't look you up. And through I get a chance to do it and get it on the agenda, I probably will remove it. But you don't have to make a report. You don't have to do anything. You don't have to do the job. You don't have to be thankful. You still got it. You don't have to do anything.
What did you say?
You said you ain't gonna do the job.
What did you say on the eighteen?
The what?
What did you say?
I said I probably gonna remove it. But I ain't got around to it yet. Until I do it, until I do it at an open meeting and make it official, it's still what I originally did. Until I get it, I didn't get it. I forgot to put it on the agenda this week. It, I mean, it wasn't nothing changed, but it just didn't happen. But now I think that. When I get around, I got a couple of judgments to make. I got a couple changes to make. You don't have to do that. You have to take away what you're doing, Charlie. You don't have to. It's called your name, that don't mean nothing. Okay. The, uh, new bill. So we did what?
Assistant.
Uh? Oh. Consent it, agenda.
Make, make a motion, no computer, cut it.
Move the maiden, take it on, please.
Aye.
The both? Okay, you, uh, Charlie, raise your hand.
Mayor, we have our second drawdown request from Herzog Construction. They're almost forty-four percent done, including the materials they have on site down there. Uh, this pay request, part of them is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ten cents, of which you each have a copy of the drawdown sheet there. And we have two invoices, uh, one for standard engineering, design engineering, for twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars, and the other one for inspection of twenty-six hundred... Let me take my glasses off. Twenty-six hundred, eighteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. With your approval, please need to go to rural development. They will draw the funds down, deposit in your account, and checks be written to both of us for these funds that are due. Well within budget on both of them. Nothing's going on at the treatment plant that's causing a problem with this pay. That's why we're doing a real good job. And, uh, in the next couple of months, they're gonna move along completely.
We have a motion, okay? That's on, okay?
Yes.
Make a motion, go ahead.
I second it.
Move the maiden, take it on, please.
Aye.
The both? Now, you got another report?
Uh, I've got additional. I'd like to make a request for your approval on F. Pursuiting Treatment Plant. Uh, there were several items that came up in the last couple of years that we did not get included in the project because of the budget on it. One of those items is a control panel on the lift station down there that needs to be replaced, and you guys just have not had the money to. Uh, two more items came up during this construction period. One of them is two gate valves that sit behind the old drawing beds and evidently haven't been used in some time. They're frozen up. We can't use them. And the last one is your lighting down there around the oxygen that you clarify or haven't worked for a while and probably need to be replaced. With board approval, I would like to contact rural development on behalf of the city and ask if we can use some of the money in our project to buy that equipment and have your crew replace and repair those who are back in standard order in the twenty items that are working right. We need to, for the operation of the plant. Material cost on them, probably looking in the neighborhood of less than eight thousand dollars unless there's something really, really wrong with the lights or spores of those. I think it's probably a valve stem, uh, photosynthesis fart or something like that. It's probably enough work, but we don't really have to do it. So with your approval, I would be happy to write a letter to RD and ask them if we can buy some of the money. I think we'll have it left in the project. Everything else is gonna be done as needed. This will clean it up and make everything new and usable for the item that you're dealing.
So there won't be money left?
Yes. The only way we can do it is if there's money in the project to do this. But we have to ask third rule to be able to utilize that money to do it.
Do we have a motion to do it?
I make a motion to do it.
I second it.
Make it say, on, please.
Aye.
The both? Over there. Now, you got another report?
Mayor, if I could switch gears into the water, uh, with chlorination project. Uh, last month when I was here, uh, conversation was on the chlorination. Uh, and I didn't realize, if you remember, I was talking about the UV was going through that project. And Frank had asked a question about chlorine, and I didn't catch it quick enough to realize he changed the subject on me. I thought I clarified that, that I was talking about the UV. The paper still came out that we was blaming DNR for the chlorination. No, we've got all the stuff from DNR. They're okay. And they sent us a letter, the city a letter, and said, "Why don't you talk about us holding yet?" No, the fuck's holding stuff has been defended. RD required some items. We're getting cleaned up right now. You gotta get the funding lined up in place. The plants have been approved by DNR. As soon as you have the funding in place, we need to bid out the water line. They goes up Cemetery Road to replace the one that's a dedicated coming in and add the chlorine equipment. But that is something that the mayor, the board, I assume, is working on getting that stuff done. And we are ready to go. Soon as you know for sure, we'll get the advertisement in the paper, we'll get the bids on the water line, get it constructed, and give the report back to the DNR. Your water quality's been excellent. That's helped us a bunch through this period of desire. But they still got their requirement down. They gave us approval back in January. It does have to still be done. It's all set to go except for the funding. That's all I have. Was there a question, the maiden?
I, I have a question that this is, at least two of us have. I'm sure we have not heard about this. Is it, is it has to be done right now? Can we talk about it or get some education on it? Or we make this in, like, do we have to make the decision tonight?
No, no decision you can make tonight.
Okay.
This still has to have a funding. But the decision was made eight months ago by DNR that you will disinfect with chlorine on the system. We did the plans. We did the report. We did the schedule. Got it all into them. They have approved that. They're still open to us on the schedule compliance to get it done. What shocked them was when I misquoted the fact on the chlorine being DNR's problem. They took exception to that. And I understand that because I got caught off guard. It wasn't intentional. It, it's the UV that we're gonna have trouble maybe getting done in September. It's the longest extension they've given us.
We have to have it done by September?
Yes. We have to have it up and operational. But I think that looks good right now.
The chlorine, the chlorination?
No, the UV. I'm sorry. We're doing the same thing.
Okay, the same thing, yes.
But the chlorine, they want us on it now. And they gave us the notice last year. They wanted it immediate. They was giving us like ninety days to get it done. Because of our water quality, they're not enforcing that. They're gonna come up, do an inspection, take more tests. They already told Dennis about the schedule app. We're gonna have to be in compliance with that.
Or warm water, under warm weather hits.
There could be a turnover in that. Could cause a problem. High water in the river, if there is a problem out in the other part of the land, could be a problem. But right now, you've got a good test. As I said, all we're waiting on is you guys to get your funding lined up. We'll get that advertised. It won't take thirty days to get construction done. Forty-five days to totally put it in operation. Rural Development, I can usually put this effect in system.
Have a trade to, to run.
Thank you. You killed it. Thanks. Be careful.
Trade in the report. Oh. Oh, hell, I'm aware I'm doing. We done okay here. Eleven minutes, five D. He got uncovered. Water, chlorine, everything's uncovered there. You all have meters. Flag, you can take over on that. See what, if you wanna vote on it, what you want, if you want to amend it. I can, if it's my vote, I can't share the meeting, so it's my vote.
We've discussed it in the work session. And we would like to amend that. Whether there'd be no minimum torque on that heater. You pay it only for the gallons you use. Order number eight seventy-nine. And we were all agreeing.
What you need to do is call or vote to amend the ordinance from that day.
I've been looking for it.
Well, if you can, but then better they did. Good to hear the meeting.
I make a motion to bill number eight seventy-nine. My second.
To reflect what you discussed, please?
Yeah.
You guys move it in second.
You have to call, please.
Aye.
The both? Okay. I take back over now. I can't get it off in there. It sounds silly, but it is kind of a question. But they've been, I go, I'm there on time, but if I'm sharing the meeting, I can't. Okay. Now, we back to the part now. You understand, and get that ready for the next month, and it'll be, uh, get one month ready, we won't hold it over for another month after that. It's nice to get a lot of slack from people this month while I'm working on building. People here have a lot of checks and stuff, and they want to read it. Hold it in a month, but otherwise, we'll pass it next month. Okay, fire department.
They don't have a report, Carl. Just, uh, we had two medical calls and one electrical problem for a month. Now, we have had a pretty good turnout on our barbecue. That's all I got.
Police, well, Mark has a test on family. He didn't have to be fatigued or anything, so I told him. He does have a test in his family. Park and cemetery.
I don't want to report. I mean, oh, Alderman. Um, I have a question about a little policy that you know of that, um, that needs, that, uh, the park needs to be reserved here in advance. It was brought up at a meeting at, um, at church because they, they use the park once a year for their egg hunt. And, uh, at last month's meeting, I, it was in the minutes, and I said, uh, it says the City of St. Mary would like the church to reserve the city park one year in advance for the youth egg hunt. And, uh, I said, "Well, I thought we decided not to do that because things would change any year." And they said it was the policy, it was a new policy that the city had made. And I said, "No, I didn't see anything like that." So do you, anybody know the policy or the lyrics?
You said man acts.
No.
Oh, you said man acts. Well, I was like, "Oh, that's high tech."
I'm sorry.
Minutes from the church meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Policy that you have to rent a year ahead of time.
Nobody in mine, I've never been told. Never been a policy.
Well, that was what I was told. And I said, "There, there's no policy?" And they said, "Yes, they were told there was." And I said, "I would check on it." That's what I've been done.
No, I, there is, I mean, you do have to call and reserve it if you want it for that specific day, right? But you don't have to.
It's early, up to a year in the grant. You can.
You can up to a year. Oh, but you don't have to.
Do you know something, being an adult, that I don't go ahead?
Mayor, uh, it was brought up at the, uh, church meeting because an anonymous donor wants to pay for the church's use of the park for that, uh, day that they have the egg hunt. And it was recommended that they try to reserve it a year in advance so this person could be, uh, could make the donation for the church. So that's all that was said. It was a recommendation. It was not a policy of the, uh, city or anything else. It was just a recommendation because this particular donor said that if they made it a year in advance, that he would, or he or she would make the, uh, appropriate donation for, for the reservation. That's all.
I don't understand the reason in behind that do it a year in advance or in favor. I did the, I mean, they can't, but they, they have no.
I was asking if there was an emergency policy.
There is no law.
Okay, that's, that's really what I was asking.
I don't think that we book more than a year ahead, but it can be done a year ahead. There is no law. There was.
I would think, I told them, but they said, "Oh, no, we were told that we have to." And I said, "Well, we can check on it." That's what I was thinking. Thank you.
If somebody said that, you could probably stop by the office or give me a call, and I could straighten you out on that anytime. You wouldn't have to. Once you're bored, you can get straight on something like that.
Okay.
Now, warning, sir. I'm, Dennis is over that. He's supervisor. And no matter who's gonna be over that department, he will probably be giving reports on that. Now, whoever's gonna be the head of that department can too. But Dennis will be, he'd over that. He'd stay the operation. So he'll give a little report on the watering server when he available. And I want to hear it now. You have anything to report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Uh, we have the UV unit. It's here. It's yet to be installed. I was told by the contractor, do the installation that it'll be beginning of this next week if they'll start installing the, uh, UV unit into the trough and everything. Uh, the piping and all that associated equipment that's needed. We had to work on rotor motor mount and replace the belts on number two. They went, they went out. So, uh, the rotors are in the works to be done by the project. So I don't wanna spend a whole lot of money to put into them. I just wanna keep them up and, and, and working like they should so the plant operates properly. But I really don't wanna spend a whole lot of money in getting them, uh, things like the bearings and stuff like that. Back tees were all good, just not, that don't have to back to back to you. Uh, May twenty-third, DNR inspection of the wastewater plant. They'll be coming down and doing the sanitary, taking samples and, uh, sending them off to the lab. Had several service calls. Uh, DNR wants to inspect the distribution also. But, uh, like Charlie already said, they're holding off until we get the chlorination in before they do an inspection of the distribution. They wanna come down and, after we add it all up. So soon as we get it done, because the inspection is supposed to be over by the end of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you want to give a meeting? Okay, go ahead, guys. I got you marked off.
We, uh, I don't have a lot. We've got a lot of passing to do. And, uh, we're gonna have to start on four, uh, streets. They'll give us places here. They'll just, uh, let off materials, sixty-five dollar a ton. And Southwest Stone, just eighty-two forty a ton. So I'm not exact, but it's somewhere around there. If we get ten ton, it would be a hundred and seventy-four dollars to go to eleven. And I think that, that's four dollars, and I think it's two to go to. We're gonna get the streets passed. We got this work to do. We're gonna work on it, too. That's about all I have.
Now, we realize in case somebody's thinking, "Say, we're not gonna be doing no streets with this. This is strictly, uh, we strictly follow this. If there's any money in the street whenever we get to, or streets will be looked at that on the industrial basis later. This is strictly repairing corridors in the street we own, and not for complete street. Okay?
How does, who, do we have, I don't know which department this would be, do we have anything for mosquito abatement? As much dishes as we have that now, I know that you do something about cleaning up, but do we have anything that would? And do we have funding for that that we?
Nothing on the road.
For what?
Mosquito abatement.
Mosquito spray.
Like they, exactly. I've been involved in this for maybe down in the last twenty years. And that spray is a joke. We used to do it. We'd go down the street, got a little sprayer, and you could get a little bit here and then out in the middle of the yard with a tire or a little, it don't, it's money. We don't, I don't think our equipment even work. We're not even using it here. It sounds good. It's a good PR, but it doesn't work. Now, if you could afford to get to town sprayed with an airplane, where you cover your whole town, then it would work. But going down the trees and cover a small area on each side, and people with yards, and they got their flower pots and bangles with water and the frog ponds. We can't afford it. And it won't, it, it, the, the money we would spend wouldn't even come to a horseload for water to. You gotta pay, you gotta do it, pay even using, and you gotta, and we don't have a thing to it. It all is a diesel running through, uh, motor. You done applied.
It does.
Davey Swin, I own a wild damn truck doing it around here, and it didn't make no difference. In town, so, you know, but it don't work.
But can we look into something, maybe find out if there's anything that, there, I, I have read about things that you can put in standing water?
Oh, they got, I've seen that though. I've seen things.
Would that help any of the sun, you know, in different places like that?
I guess it might help if everybody in town did it and had it. And, uh, we still have. Dennis. I know it's hard to tell us, but you have to remember. They married, they were about to split. All, all, two thirds around us. It's over here, it's around. We're gonna have to speak. I mean, you can work your butt off and spend money, and you may make a fraction better because he's still behind us here. Nobody wants to hear it, but I don't always believe in town like it is. And if everyone, if these people don't waste money and, and it's whatever it is for policy, unless you got a elaborate system that we couldn't afford. And castles, they got castles that keep on throwing, uh, stagnant water. It don't do it on good and running water, but running water don't bring mosquito videos. Okay?
Thank you.
Emergency management, I don't have anything. They don't have you on here no more. Until you're gone, you're still here. All right. Don't go overreventously on me now. They're about skipping over and then I don't control.
I'm having to report.
Randy?
I'm having to report.
I've been marking long off. That wasn't difficult. Let me come in late. Now, we're getting down to the most important part here. You don't have anything, man?
No, sir.
I'm gonna give you some more work, including next month when you're running out to. Citizen participation. Uh, I see we got the people here, and I'm gonna clean it a little bit. What I did, if you, if you get up, talk about almost anything in, in litigation or something like that. Litigation, we got three minutes. If, when the vote is voted up, and three minutes up, and let the board prove for our detention, you have to shut down. Okay. Who wants to be first? Do you have, you have the thing, give your name and address.
My name is Rose Mars. I live in three, at three ninety-nine Cemetery Road. I bought the house, or they gave us the house in November. The house burnt. Um, we're trying to recover. My husband lost his job because of the fire. We, the, I came here because Mark told me I had to go and talk to you about the water home slash bus that we have in the side of our yard. It's still on our property. Um, we wanna keep it because I don't have much storage at all, and it's good for storage. It doesn't leak. Some of my stuff won't get, you know, wet, chewed up, whatever. Um, just, I want permission to fence it in if I have to, if you still want me to, because I'm, we've already got the stuff for the privacy fence we want to put up around the back. Um, so I got my daughter's room, and he gets my outside one of the chains. But, uh, um, it's gonna take us some time. My husband's starting to find a job 'cause I can work with him when it's done, but I said he would have to be fired. Um, and we just, being disabled, I can't get out there. There's no way. But we want permission to be able to block it in because I know this was another gentleman up the way across the street that has a, a van that they said he blocked in. Just block it in with my fence and still use it. I'm gonna leave a gate in case we ever put a big gate out for the front, in case we ever have to go there. I'm gonna make sure that I'm not gonna block off the grinder or any of the, you know, the stuff that they need, that they have to get to that's over there. Um, so they don't have to mess with the gate or anything like that. Um, from where it's sitting, I can actually move it up more. I mean, it drives, it runs. I had, he had four children, I have two. We got married, put in a Ford Mates. I'm the baby of the same situation. So we took the kids camping, took them on trips, and it still runs, still drives good. My problem is getting it planted. I can't get insurance, so I think, "Oh, we need to go." But my ex-husband owns a South sixty-seven Camaro. They use that insurance on his. But they won't insure it. I think it might be because of the weight capacity. I don't know. But they said it's because it's too old. But, you know, I can't get plates. I have to insure it in order to get the insurance or get the plates. And then you gotta have plates to get it to get seconds, like, and you can't do that either. So we're trying. I've got two handicapped kids. You wanna help with the fence, too, but I don't know how much they're gonna be able to do. But right now, him finding a job, it's just me and when my brother comes to help. So I'd like a permission to just block, you know, fence in around it. And I guess it's, I don't need to leave it out. It's nicer, but it's gonna benefit more us using it storage than anything right now. We're still trying to fix the rest of the house from the fire damage on my birthday. So I'm just asking for permission to be able to keep it and fence it and store it.
You just store it, basically. Store it, sorry. I would like to look at before I made that type of decision.
Well, I got, I'm gonna update you on this a little bit. Chief, we're given a letter from Mark, thirty days to comply. Chief, then a letter to, to board. And I, Mark was supposed to note, um, what they're supposed to do. The letter told what R. N. says. You got thirty days to comply. If you think or don't, or disagree, you can notify the board in writing that you want a hearing, which has not happened. Come to the board, it's not part of that order. Come to the board, it's not part of that order.
Okay, what?
Coming to, ma'am, don't, please. Coming to, and five, and Mark is not here to defend himself. Again, he was supposed to come back and answer. He was supposed to notify the mayor of all, the board, say that they want a hearing on it. And then I, I got time to set one of them. I gotta give them at least three days notice that we're gonna have a hearing. And we'll have a hearing on. But now setting all that aside, they're still gonna have to have a hearing. What's going on here? Don't get it. That's not a hearing. But she's obligated to give them the paperwork. So now you gotta follow the order. Then the order didn't read. Within thirty days, they have to comply or notify the city in writing that you want a hearing. Not that you wanna meet with the board. That's not a hearing. So I, Mark went back immediately. Now Mark's not here. I mean, he told me that. But now that, set all that aside. We've been to this one before. I can show you one right now. It's got a shed built around it because we're not gonna start having to deal with the storage sheds in this town. And why? He had, he had one, he wanted, just like they did, it's bigger, I mean, smaller. He built, he had built a building. It's still here in the town today, but it's got a building, a shed built around it. He wants to get the bus. He might build a shed around it. Probably depends. We're not gonna start having buses and vans and things for storage sheds. We're trying to clean the town. I mean, they don't like what I'm saying. Maybe the board don't agree with it. If they don't, they can change the room and do it further. But I totally against letting vehicles be storage sheds. We're gonna wind up to be able to. And I can show you one state, got a building built around a, a van, a bus van. Because we wouldn't do it there. But we still, even whatever we do, we have to have a hearing. It has to be set up. If not, it would be a hearing set up. It could be before the meeting, after the meeting, or any way that we set it up. We have hearing of. That's hearing. With this claim in the paperwork we give them, it's spelled out. It should've been highlighted. I assume it was. I can't speak for Mark if Mark's not here. And understandably so. Now, David, if they wanna appeal to the board that a hearing, they can. But now their time's running out. They're thirty days. But that's, that's the rule, now. I wanna change it. That's before it. If I wanna talk, letting everybody that's got a vehicle, they wanna use it for storage sheds, then we're gonna have problems. And I sympathize with them. And I, I still, I hear what you're saying and I'm not gonna, I've never seen a vehicle put in the insurance. I, I'm sure she's had problems. But I just can't believe somewhere they ain't insured and be legal. But it still can be used for storage sheds. Even if it's got lighting on. You can't use them for storage sheds. You start putting junk and stuff in them, they're not storage sheds. They're recreational vehicle or a vehicle. Even if you had insurance and lighting, you can't use it for storage sheds unless you got a building around it to make a storage build down there. And probably depends on. And first place, you have to get a permit for fence. Let the rule change. You even get a fence, you have to get a permit. They have to get a permit. Anybody else have anything they wanna say?
I would like to say if they have something additions that the board might want to send it to, they don't know that time. If they have anything to say in, maybe in your bubble, what you just said, or anything to add to it. The board has to read to let them.
They can say anything they want to. But let we have a hearing, it's not gonna happen. The, the paperwork is in. Now, there's gonna be a violation of the order very shortly. We can argue back and forth, but that don't change the rules of the order. Now, she gives her opinion, I'm telling you what the order did and what the rule is.
How much time?
I don't know the date on this. I don't have it marked on here. I can't.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm new to this side and I don't understand a lot of it, but.
Yeah, but weren't you given a letter?
Yeah, and I asked for my job tomorrow and he told me not to do anything with it because what, what originally it was just take the motor out of it, cut the front off, take the tires off it, put it on concrete, slide and use it for storage. Well, Mark said, don't do anything. And then he, as I told him, I said, nobody will insure it. The only insurance group company we have on it discontinue that shit.
Has anybody authorized attention on it to work on it? My league ain't getting out of hand. Nobody authorized attention on it. Now, if it's going to talk about it, we will. I don't have time. But I do have time with the three minutes being up and up.
That's why I asked if we could, if the board would agree to.
Well, they didn't act.
I guess not.
You know, it's not, it's the rule, the rule. Do you, I'm gonna ask you four things. Do you want vehicles to be storage sheds? I'm gonna.
Probably, probably not. If you're gonna, I guess I would.
Now, of course, it ain't your neighborhood this time. It could be the next time. You gotta remember that. The whole city is one. There's no one exclusive because that's a new addition up there. They, it can be done up there, it can be done down here. But we did need to tell them, just like I just told them, they need to notify us that they want in. And then we can sit here and we can talk for thirty minutes. Back and forth. Then y'all can make a decision. But in light of.
No one knows when your, your time is.
It's on the top of the letter and I didn't bring it because Mark said he would be here. Is he, you know?
Mark told you not to do anything right now?
No, this was like a week or so ago because I was at home and he came to talk to my husband and we were, you know.
We're still, we're, we're violating the order right now. One way or the other, all I want them to do is send me a letter that they wanna hear in writing. Or else I want the board to extend their talking time. And unless it happens, we're gonna shut this down. And we're gonna get this straight and then, because this thing gonna happen no more after this week and night.
She's Benislav. She also ran this paper. It should've already been in here. And it says that, it said Benislav, you're, it's time to cut this off. Uh, we're getting nowhere.
What, what's that for?
I'd like a motion to cut it off.
You don't have to make a motion. If you don't extend it, it's over. We're gonna move on. Next question? Anybody else want to speak? Motion to adjourn, bein' all right?
I make a motion to adjourn, you agree?
Make, take it on back?
Aye.
The vote?
That was an aye. For adjourn. I just didn't get out past. It was a, it was a motion to adjourn, but after me, I was, I was adjourned, but I didn't get out past.